Call to orders, Violet Township Board of Trustees. Meeting Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Present.
You have a call.
Stand with me if you are able for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for those that protect us at both home and abroad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I've been presented with regular trustee meeting minutes from May 5th. Pleasure to the board.
Plead to accept, submitted by the fiscal office without public reading.
Second.
Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I see no county authorities in attendance. Let's move on to public comment. If you would like to address the trustees, address, approach the podium, state your name, address, and group affiliation. You'll be limited to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Larry Taylor. I'm with Volunteer Energy. I believe our address is 790 Windmiller Drive in Pickerington. We've been talking about the Violet Township Gas Aggregation Program, and I've been doing a little bit of due diligence. I spoke with the Fairfield Board of Elections, and they said that we needed to do a resolution, that the township needed to authorize a resolution to put it on the November 2021 ballot. And so I'm here tonight to discuss that.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a resolution prepared for tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
So then, as I understand it, we also had to schedule two public hearings?
Yes.
And at the public hearings, we have nothing to say, so are you going to run that or what?
Absolutely.
How far apart they have to be?
I don't know, but I will find out.
So we had to publish it twice? In two consecutive weeks in a paper of general circulation in the township for the county? Is anybody up here now?
We do.
We did two public hearings on the plan. Once a week for two consecutive weeks.
So we had to publish a notice once a week for two consecutive weeks?
Correct.
Then to hear it? Then we got to do it again?
Right.
Anything else?
Not at this time for me.
Mrs. Wild?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would I work out those dates and times with Mr. Dabino?
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That says if it passes?
Yes.
Have anyone else that would like to address the trustees?
Yeah, they're big. 12599 Tollgate Road. I just wanted to come up and thank the trustees for making the meetings available online for the public. So thank you very much.
You're most welcome, Mr. Dabino. Anyone else? Departmental reports? Will you be making the report for the fire chief?
That's what I was just asking for this. Is Mike not coming?
He was in the office.
Let's go ahead and skip the fire chief for right now and give him a chance to get over. Mr. Dabino, Township Administrator?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. You have my report. I wanted to mention that the Public Library will be holding a Community Resources Expo on June the 9th. I've asked Mr. Duffy to attend that. So he will be attending that and showcasing all the services the township has to offer, and its foreigner vendors and things to show what services they have to offer the community. So that is June the 9th. Also, the Fairfield County Board of Elections is asking to use the event center on June the 25th to hold a regional meeting of the Ohio Association of Election Officials. If we would allow this, the township would be the sole sponsor of the event. They would also give us a half hour to talk about the township. So I think it'd be a good opportunity for us to show it to other counties, agencies, that what we have. So I would recommend that we do allow them to do that. I have worked out the details. We do have another function the next day and things, but we can make it all work. The roof contractor, as you can all tell, has started. He will finish up this week. He's done a great job. I think it's really a good improvement to this building. The Pickerington Area Chamber Commerce Annual Award Celebration is June the 10th. If anyone wants to attend, please let me know so I can get that registration done. You and/or your spouses, both, however that's going to work. So please let me know. At the Salt Barn, I did present you a quote for engineering architect last meeting. We didn't really discuss it. So I didn't prepare anything for today's meeting, but if we want to proceed with that, I could prepare something for the next meeting if we want to proceed with this. Okay. I also received a proposal from the City of Pickerington to help us with code enforcement as far as pulling signs. So I know I sent that to all three of you. I don't know whether anyone's reviewed it yet or not. So I didn't know whether I wanted to discuss that tonight or leave it for another day.
I think we can leave that go to the next meeting so we can take a look at that. I think for that kind of money, we could hire a part-time person who could do the science and also some other things that would be more beneficial to the township. We need to see how that balances out.
Okay. Vanessa and I did attend the bid opening down at the County Road Engineers yesterday for our portion of the project, which would be asphalting, you know, milling and filling. There were two bids. Columbus Asphalt at $311,901, and the Shelley Company for $258,914.25. The engineer's estimate was $353,000, so both of them were below the engineer's estimate, with the Shelley Company being the apparent lowest yesterday. I did receive late this afternoon a resolution from the county to award that, for us to award that. But I did not bring that. I did not bring that to tonight's meeting. I'll bring that in two weeks. I do have several resolutions. First resolution, which is Resolution 21-0518-04. This resolution is support of the track application for the Far East I-70 interchange improvements. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting where they were having there. So this resolution is just in support of that project.
This is for the 256?
Tail Road. Yes, sir.
Move to adopt 04.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next resolution, which is...
Well, we got powers up too high someplace.
05-18-05. This resolution authorized 2021 sponsorship of the Picktown Palooza event. We have talked about this in the past. This is a $10,000 sponsorship. And fiscal officer and I have looked at the budget. We do have the funds to pay this.
Pleasure to the board on 05. I will move to adopt 05.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Mr. Neekamp, I don't have my papers with me, and I think you're aware of what I'm going to talk about. Between the end of Picktown Palooza 19, they had a significant amount of money left. And then going into '21, start up because they didn't do anything in '20. There's unaccounted several thousands of dollars that's not accounted for.
Are you referring to the tax reports for Panger Productions that are public records? Is that what you're talking about? The difference between them?
Yes.
That's correct, but I couldn't answer to what the difference in the numbers.
How much that was? Was it 30,000 or 20,000?
It was over 30.
Over 30,000. Which, to me, says I need to know where that money went and why it's not accounted for before I can even think about supporting anything.
In that, I think you would need Chris Stein or Panger Productions to answer that. I wouldn't have an answer of their tax records.
I'm okay tabling it if you need more information. That's fine.
I'll second the motion to table.
We will leave that on the table then.
I will ask Mr. Stein to attend the next meeting.
You need, we need to vote on it.
I'm planning on it. Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion to table has passed.
Okay, Resolution 05-18-06. A resolution authorizing all actions necessary to create a governmental natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to revised Code 4929.26, and directing the Fairfield County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors.
Pleasure to the board on 06.
Move to adopt.
I will second that. Any questions?
My only comment is that that forces us to put something on the ballot, that it forces our residents who get gas from Columbia Gas, not the other gas companies, only Columbia, Gas of Ohio. And it automatically forces all those people to be part of this unless they know that they can opt out. And my thought is that if this is such a good program, then why aren't they promoting it and sending literature to all those residents and showing each one of them? Or inviting all those people to a private public meeting where they can show them how much money they can save by automatically just opting in now without us forcing everybody to be in, and then have to opt out if they don't want it. That's just my comment.
Did Mr. Taylor leave?
Apparently.
Oh.
Is this a question that you've asked in the past when he's made the presentations, or is this a new question?
Just a comment in the discussion portion.
Mr. Dabino, will you find out that information?
Yes, I most certainly will.
Mr. Dunlap? Are you advocating that we also table this?
I'll move to table till we get those answers.
I will just give a little point. I was going to ask Mr. Taylor for exact numbers, but I did want to reiterate that with an opt-out program, Volunteer Energy is a really great company in Pickerington. They work with the City of Pickerington, and they always, every year, provide a check back to the city, which is not provided to anywhere else because it's a Pickerington-based business. So that was, I think that was one of the points that he had made last time that question was posed, but I'm okay tabling it. That's fine.
Is that a second?
I will second.
Okay. Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
The item is tabled.
Next resolution, 05-18-07. Purchase of one 2022 Ford F-150 crew craft utility pickup truck. We did budget for this, even though I think there was, on my part, there was some confusion. I thought we were buying a pickup truck, but actually it's a service truck. And after Mr. Dunlap and I did talk to the road department about this, I guess the old truck does have some transmission issues. So that's, that's why it's a service truck rather than just a pickup truck like we were thinking. And we did budget for it, so, you know, the money is there.
Pleasure to the board.
You did say 150. It's showing 350.
It's 350. Okay. If I said 150, I missed voting.
Pleasure to the board, 07.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
A resolution, 05-18-08. This is the replacement of the pants at Bucie Road Park. We talked about it a couple meetings ago. We do have the funds for that also.
Pleasure to the board on 08.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The expenses, they take it down since that's similar to what we have at the Harman Road Park. Will we save the good ones for replacements there?
Yes, we're going to save that. The good ones.
Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next resolution that I will bring up is a late arrival. Resolution 05-18-12. A resolution declaring the property owned by PS Midwest 2 Pickerington LLC, located at 11955 Spring Creek Drive in Ballot Township, Fairfield County, nuisance. I think we've talked about this also, the grass needs mowed, and they have neglected to do so.
Pleasure to the board on 12.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
For the record, so that everybody understands that address, that's the public storage at the corner of Milner and Refugee. That's all I have this evening.
Additional questions for the Township Administrator? Mrs. Wild?
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
No, I have none. Thank you.
I have no questions, Mr. Dabino.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Fire Chief, Michael.
I'm believing it's Mike going on. Apologize, I have to meet before 30 on calendar and four o'clock. Got three resolutions tonight, some updates will go up first. IAS survey took place today. I think we did pretty well. We all know how it scored for four to six months. We have some other items to get back to, but overall, things look pretty good. We had everything in order. Station 592, the paving did take place today, so the parking lot is paved. Garage framing is, has been really going well the last week. If you go by there, it's essentially under roof. The siding is almost done, so it's like a building. And we walked through the west side today, and basically they're putting all the tile, ceiling tile back in, and we're going to begin the cleaning process, and we'll begin transitioning from the east side of the building to the west side of the building with the crews, so they can start work on the east side of the building going forward. So that's all going well. Monthly report, just real quick, the run volumes, I think, a half percent ahead of last year. Transport are about 10% ahead. Transport receipts are about 3% below last year. And I will be on vacation starting Friday the 21st, and I'll be back on meeting first in the office. Chief Paxton will be here during that time. Resolutions, I got resolution 01. This is a resolution to purchase new thermal imaging cameras. I'll be getting these from Clear. These are different than what we currently have. We're getting three that will be stationed in the trucks. We'll all get the trucks to clear that replace what the officers use, and then we're going to purchase nine other, what they call situational awareness cameras, which is a handheld smaller camera that will be utilized by the firefighters in the seats of the trucks. So basically, the lieutenant, the firefighters on the scene will all have thermal imaging cameras in their hand for use during fires. This is at a cost not to exceed $21,256. This does bring all of our cameras up to the latest technology as well.
Pleasure to the board on 01.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional questions? Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 02. The resolution related to that is to declare the six polar cameras that we currently have as excess and for sale. And we do get trade-in value on this with Clear. Clear did not want the old camera, so besides the trade-in value, we'll put them up on gut deals, and somebody will sure purchase them for use in smaller apartments. So we'll put them up on gut deals once we get the new cameras and sell them on gut deals.
Pleasure to the board on 02.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And Resolution 03 is a resolution to purchase cable command, incident command software for our battalion chiefs, our active battalion chiefs to use on scenes. This purchase is at a cost of $14,650. It is a purchase that we will be splitting with Truro Council Fire Department. So we're, we will be the department of record for the purchase and pay the purchase, but then we'll invoice Truro for their portion of it. There are annual fees associated with it, but basically what it is, is it allows the battalion chiefs when they're on the scene, or the active battalion chiefs also when they're on the scene, to utilize an iPad to manage the incident. It's a drag-and-drop piece of software so they can move truck companies into specific positions they've been assigned to. It helps with the accountability aspect on the scene. So we've been using it in a demo mode for probably the last month while we've been going out to light halt and training, and everybody seems to be very, very happy with it, so we're going to go forward with the purchase.
Pleasure to the board on 03.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's all I have.
Additional questions for the fire chief? Mrs. Wild?
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
I have none, other than also had a missing child the other night. Did we get called today? Find the child before we got notified.
My knowledge.
They had a missing five-year-old autistic that on one of the streets closer to us. That's why I asked, so.
I have no questions, chief. Thank you for your report. Elected officials, Vanessa Neekamp, fiscal officer.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank our assistant in the fiscal office. Majah has spent a lot of time this past two weeks learning how to stream on YouTube and making sure all the equipment works for us. So I just want to point out that I really appreciate the work she's done for that. The first two items I had for you are just informational material. I wanted to make sure that you were aware that with your changes to the employee handbook, that I'm budgeting $10,516.52 in comp time payouts that'll be paid out of this budget. And then I'm also including your changes in the proposed budget that will be before you on June 16th for your budget hearing. So I'm just giving you that information as reference. I have three resolutions for you. The first one is 2021-05-18-09, and this is a transfer of funds.
Pleasure to the board on 09.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yeah.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The second item I have for you is 2021-05-18-10, and this is to amend our current 2021 appropriations.
Pleasure to the board on 10.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions?
I couldn't read that. When I got all my, at home, what's that for?
The first...
I probably know, but...
Yeah, the first amount is an increase in our general fund, and part of it is to pay those, what we had not budgeted for is that overtime payment payout is a small portion of it. And then we also are increasing our capital projects line, but it's actually a line that we pay OPWC loan payments out of. And it's really a transfer of funds into it, but we needed that appropriation there to be able to pay those.
Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mrs. Monahan, I mean, Mrs. Wild, sorry?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
You sure?
Yeah, I'm sure. Sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the last item I have for your consideration is 2021-05-18-11, and this is our regular approval of purchase orders.
Pleasure to the board on 11.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Neekamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Motion passes. And that is all I have for you unless you have questions for me.
Additional questions for the fiscal officer? Mrs. Wild?
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
I have none. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have no questions. Thank you for your report. Trustee reports, Mrs. Wild?
So this Saturday is graduation. We are opening the Wig mom for that. I had a couple of people come out and help me plant some flowers, so it looks a little bit nicer for that event.
What's the event again?
For the graduation.
Oh, okay.
And that's, so when we get to the events where there might be more than one trustee, I didn't quite get to ask you if you were going to be there. So I know you were there last year.
I'll be there.
But that is this Saturday, 9 to 5. You can come before or after your graduation ceremony. Well, we should have banners by then.
Thank you. Mr. Dunlap?
The only thing I have is we received a letter from county engineer. We need to set up, give some dates. He wants to have a meeting with Etna Township, Volat Township, Liberty Township, and Fairfield County TID Committee to talk about economic development issues and potentials that, because those things, when you're looking for the big box stuff or bigger investments like bigger medical buildings and so forth, they're looking for shovel-ready things where the roads are already built or they're already scheduled to be built so that they, when people are looking, they say, these people are ahead of the game, rather than say, oh, we can be already built up someplace by the time these people decide what they're going to do. So I think that's a good thing. And Volat Township, Liberty Township to the 10. I just said Etna Township, but that means like Etna Township did up there. He's open to workday or after hours for a meeting, and he wants to do it by the first part of June, so we can get him two or three dates. Hopefully Ed can get with all of us and see what dates work, and then we can get something going. The only other thing is this Sunday, the 23rd, at 6 o'clock, at the AAA building in the fairgrounds down in Lancaster is our county township trustees and fiscal officers' meeting. So if you can attend, we'd appreciate it. The only other thing I had to report is, you may know or may not know, Etna Township did pass the zoning for the Higgy property behind New England Acres and Chavington Woods, 246 homes. They agreed to the two connectors from New England Acres on our side and the one from New England Acres off of Nantucket in the Etna Township side, they agreed to leave those be the... New England Acres off of Nantucket in the Etna Township side. They agreed to leave those be the, well, I can't, I don't know the right word, but chief might know, but the stone base and grass on top. So the fire trucks can get across in an emergency if they have to. And we've got one between Chauvin to South and Ashley Creek. And they agreed on all three of those. So hopefully that occurs. But for a point of information, a former class, not a former, a classmate of mine from back in the day is friends with Mr. Hagy. The residents over there are not happy and they are passing referendum petitions. If that goes to a vote and if that passes and it, the vote kills the, the two hundred forty-six homes, Mr. Hagy already has a property owner on, in line to buy that southeast corner. And none of it'll touch Palmer Road, so all three of those stubs will have to be opened up for traffic. And his proposal is two hundred and fifty section eight apartments. So just so everybody knows what's going on in up that area that could affect us positively or negatively or however you want to look at it. Just wanted to share that information. That's all I have.
Okay. I will be out of town from Friday this week through the first of next month. For our first vacation in four years. Should be great. Events where more than one trustee may be present. I'm hearing that it is likely on Saturday for graduation photos that Mrs. Wild and Mr. Dunlap may be here for that. Thank you. I know that people look forward to and appreciate us opening the wigwam for them to take the pictures. Can anybody think of anything else?
Sunday at six o'clock for the county meeting.
Very good. Yes, Sunday at six o'clock at the fairgrounds for the, for the county meeting as well. Anything else that anyone can think of? Next trustee meeting will be held on June second, twenty twenty-one, seven thirty PM at the Violet Township Administrative Offices, one oh one nine zero Black Lake Eastern Road. Have no old business nor tabled items from prior to this meeting, if I'm correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dunlap.
I would move that we take a ten-minute recess and then go into executive session per the high revised code, section one two one point two two G one to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee.
I will second that. Ms. Neekamp, call the rule.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Monholland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're in a ten-minute recess.
And that's all that we need on that. Just stuffs up here. Ed and us, do we need fire chief?
Unless you want to.
What if he wants to stay?
Thanks, Ed. Mike. Thank you all for attending.